All this meeting to order? All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Colette, if we could have a roll call, please. Mr. Lemay? Mr. Sheehan?
Here.
Mr. Getchea?
Yeah.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear? Mr. Bahu? Here. Okay, if we could, Mr. Moran, has anybody signed up to speak for public appearance?
I know, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Are there any school committee communications that we've had this summer? None? There is no student representative until the school's back in sessions, which will be...
Yep, which was in September, we'll have a student member.
And no time at all?
Yes, we will.
Okay, if we could have the approval of the minutes for June 16th.
Sure as I can.
Motion by Mr. Getchea, second by Mr. Sheehan, roll call. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Yes. Okay, approval, if we could have a motion to waive the reading, the warrants?
Motion. So, move.
Motion by Mr. Tatsias, and second by Mr. Moran, roll call. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Yes. Okay, if we could have a motion to approve the warrants for the month of July, dated today, August 25th, 2022, for $9,41,636.74.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Getchea, second by Mr. Sheehan, roll call. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Yes, there is no report of general counsel, so I will have the opportunity to turn the meeting over to our superintendent director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on my agenda, I would like to ask the Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Barton, to join us to give us a brief introduction of two of our newly hired administrators.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're having an enjoyable summer. I'd like to ask to come to the table Mr. Jeff Carlson and Mr. Paul Mayette. Jeff is our new Director of Human Resources, and Paul is our new Director of ELA Social Studies Chairperson. I have a little bit of a biography to share with you. Jeff Carlson is, has, an undergraduate degree in political science from Holy Cross, and a Master's of Business Administration from Assumption College. Prior to coming to Grady Lowell, Jeff was Human Resource Director for Wachusett Regional School District for seven years. Prior to that, he worked extensively in human resources in the healthcare field. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jeff.
Welcome, Paul.
Welcome aboard.
Paul Mayette is our new ELA Social Studies Chairperson. Paul comes to us with an extensive background in history and language arts. He obtained a BA from University of Maryland in history and an MA from Middlebury College in English. He holds also a certificate of study and educational leadership from Merrimack College. Paul has taught many years in both urban and suburban schools in Lawrence and North Andover. Welcome, Paul.
Welcome.
Welcome to the team.
They've already started, and they're doing a terrific job.
Yeah, and they are doing a terrific job.
Thrown right into the fire this summer of hiring.
Yes, welcome aboard. We're very thankful that, you know, you guys have the opportunity to work here. I'm sure you will love it, as most of our administrators do, because we really have something very special here at Grady Lowell Tech, and we thank you for coming aboard.
Should we go around and introduce yourself to them?
Sure.
Sure.
If you'd like, well, just to let you know, I'm the chairman of the school committee. My name's Fred Bahu. I am a representative of Lowell, voted in by the Lowell citizens.
I'm Judge Tatsias, representative of Kingsborough, and welcome aboard.
My name's Matthew Sheehan, I represent Drakehead.
I'm Paul Moran, I represent Drakehead, I also represent him. He was a student of mine here, when I was a teacher here. And then he lived through that, and I lived through it. And there we are.
It's very funny, Paul.
My name's Captain Gigi, representative of Talagans.
No, thank you. Nice to meet you.
My name's Lee Getchea, I'm representative of Lowell.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all for coming and welcome to our school community and to our leadership team, and we look forward to a great school year. Thank you for taking the time out of your schedules to come to the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson.
Nice to meet you.
They're already working overtime, it's quarter to seven.
Get some rest.
So, the next item on my agenda is I'm happy to inform the school committee that Grady Lowell has been awarded a Korean Technical Education Equitable Access Grant for the amount of $85,000. These funds will be used around equitable access and CTE programs for students with disabilities, as well as English-language learners. And next on my agenda, I'm going to make you aware of another grant that we have received, the Perkins Program Improvement and Equipment Grant for $35,000, and these funds will be used for purchasing supplies and equipment for the construction cluster. Another grant that we have received is the Weola Title I Youth Services Grant. This grant is in the amount of $55,644,000, and it's to provide services for at-risk youth here at our school. And lastly, and this is a big one, we have received an anonymous grant award in the amount of $330,000, and these funds are targeted toward purchasing STEM-based supplies and equipment, and we're going to use it towards CAD and engineering, health assisting, and pre-nursing and information technology.
Wonderful.
That's all good stuff.
When did we get awarded the large anonymous grant?
The large anonymous grant came in maybe last month.
Wow, so great news. And then we have three other grants, but we shouldn't overlook either.
Yes, so yeah, it is great news.
It is.
Yes.
Offer our students?
Offer our students, and I think in support of vocational education, or what vocational education allows our students to do. So, we appreciate all of our grant opportunities and our anonymous grant donor. The next item on my agenda is to give you a brief update on our health and safety protocols for the 2022-23 school year. And basically, they're staying the same as they were this summer, but I'd just like to preview, review them with you. Students and staff are not required to wear masks. However, those students or staff members who choose to wear a mask will be respected and supported in their choice. The statewide testing program concluded at the end of last school year. However, we as a school have decided to implement our own testing program during the 22-23 school year, and we are going to continue symptomatic rapid testing for those students and staff who become ill with COVID symptoms during the school day. And those students and staff who wish to participate in this program would need to complete the symptomatic testing consent form, which can be found on our school website. Also, as part of our school testing program, we will continue to distribute at-home rapid antigen test kits, but we will be distributing them only before holidays, Thanksgiving, winter, February vacation, and April vacation. And again, those students and staff that want to participate in this portion of our testing program would need to complete an opt-in form, and that can be found online as well. And lastly, there will no longer be COVID-19 safety checks, otherwise known as pool testing, no longer be contact tracing, or test-and-stay programs available. Quarantine is no longer required for students and staff, regardless of their vaccination status, who have been exposed to COVID-19 as long as they remain asymptomatic. However, if they become symptomatic, then they need to follow the protocol for symptomatic individuals with COVID-19. But quarantine is no longer available for students and staff who have been exposed to COVID-19, who remain asymptomatic. We will also continue to work closely with our local Board of Health in case there are outbreaks, and we will continue to have vaccination clinics throughout the school year. And those are basically the updates to the health and safety protocols for Grady Lowell Technical High School. I have put those protocols on the school website under current alert for the 22-23 school year. I have also sent out an email, a letter to parent, an email to parents and to staff informing them of the protocols and where they could be found for further review.
Anything regarding the monkeypox?
There has nothing been discussed as far as through communication with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in regards to monkeypox.
Okay.
But if things come up, I will be more than happy to discuss them at my next health update for the committee.
Great, thank you.
We're a long way ahead of us here.
Yeah.
Yeah, looking forward to a more positive school year. So, next on my agenda, I'm asking for the committee's approval of the Proposed School Resource Officer Memorandum of Agreement, and that is in your packet. I just want to highlight the biggest change in the memorandum of agreement is on page nine, and that was to develop a simple and objective complaint resolution system for members of the school community to register concerns that may arise with school resource officers. And as a result of that, we have developed a School Resource Officer Complaint Resolution Form, which will be placed on our school website and included in appendix in our student handbook, which Mike will briefly read on briefly. This form will be submitted directly to the Assistant Superintendent Principal, who will work to resolve the complaints. If the complaint is about the Assistant Superintendent Principal, then the complaint will be forwarded to me. If the complaint is about me, the complaint will be forwarded to the school committee. So, this would be complaints that the resource officers have with school administration or with the school community has with the resource officer. And that's the biggest change to the memorandum of agreement with the school resource officers.
And this is the normal protocol that the state is giving us guidance for?
Sure, it's the template that the state provides for our school resource officers. I did submit the memorandum of agreement to our legal counsel, which they have approved.
Okay. I could entertain a motion for the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Sheehan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tatsias. Roll call. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Yes.
And the last item on my agenda is to invite the Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Barton, to join us to provide information in regards to additional revisions to the student handbook for the 22-23 school year.
So, good evening. The additions to the handbook, there are primarily two. The remaining additions that are included in there are ones that had been approved in the springtime. So, the first addition is the school resource officer complaint resolution form that the superintendent just spoke of. So, that's included in the student handbook to provide information to the school community, obviously the students and the parents, so that information is contained within. Secondly, the other addition is the addition to information regarding disclosure about, or annual notification disclosure about, people who have access to student records without consent. That would be people who have information or access to our X2 Aspen database. That would be primarily the leadership team, and in this case, the school resource officer that would have access to that for legitimate educational interests. So, those are the two primary additions to the school handbook. The remaining additions are ones that have been approved previously.
Just to clarify, Mike, the form is going to be added to appendix?
E.
E?
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was K. All right.
E. Updated appendix E, page 117.
And the pages will probably change once we add the additional revisions in for tonight and for your access?
And the complaint form will be in multiple languages, and I think you have a copy of it, you'll see that it denotes who's filing the complaint.
What is a legitimate educational interest?
Students' information such as conduct, behavior, demographics, home language, things of that nature. And the school resource officers work in consultation with the main office and myself to obtain that information.
Okay.
Something that might cause harm to the school community would be a legitimate interest?
Or any research that needed to be conducted in order to determine that.
If they're not considered a school official, then they only have access, they do not have access to personal identification information unless there's an emergency situation.
Okay. Okay, motion to accept. Motion to accept by Mr. Getchea, second by Mr. Sheehan. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that was the final item on my agenda for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will have our business manager step up to the table and share what you have for us.
Good evening, so tonight I have just a couple of items. The first is a number of school budget transfers. So, I did something a little bit different here that we haven't probably done in the past. You'll see in my reason for transfer, there's a lot that are just coded as account cleanup. That's when we've got smaller overages and unders in accounts, you know, a couple thousand bucks here and there. Generally, I wouldn't transfer those things, but during our audit last year, the auditor said it's not incorrect to not make those transfers, but it's nice to have things cleaned up for a final product of a budget. So, I actually went through this here and I found, you know, I've got a couple thousand bucks here, a couple thousand bucks over on one, a couple thousand bucks under on another, matched them up and tried to clean things up. So, you'll see, I did include a lot of reasons for the ones that I would have probably normally brought for the committee to involve new purchases and those types of things. But for the most part, a lot of what I did was just that cleanup to make sure that we didn't have big overs and unders in the project.
Excuse me.
Sure.
So, are you saying everything on the left was moved to the right?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, this money here was moved over to here?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve $1,079,498.14 from Mr. Sheehan, seconded by Mr. Tatsias. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Yes.
And the second item I have this evening is the memo asking to declare two pieces of equipment from the graphics department as surplus so that we can move to dispose of them. The first is a 20-year-old booklet maker that we really couldn't even find a manufacturer on that doesn't work anymore. That probably has zero value, so that one is likely just a dumpster move. And then the second is a Burudian embroidery machine. We have a new replacement coming in for this machine, and we're working with the company that provided that replacement to determine if there is any value left for reconditioning or reusing the old equipment. This one was 10-plus years old as well, but still functional, just maybe not modern as things should be in the shop. So, we look for a motion to declare both pieces surplus, and then once I get the value back on that embroidery machine, we'll move to dispose according to the school committee policy.
Motion.
Thank you.
Roll call. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, anything under old business that somebody would like to share? Nothing under new business, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Moran.
I'd like to say that when I was here, middle of the month, July, I had the occasion to meet with the building and grounds administrator, Mr. Eric Getchea, took me around to show me what was being done during the summer. And in the sheet, machine shop, metal fab, all the equipment was moved out to the hallway. All this, those blocks were all removed, floors were poured, everything's back in place. There was some areas with a lot of painting going on, some walls were soundproofed, so there were quite a few projects, and I believe everything is set to go for next week.
That's great news. I heard we were finally able to remove the rest of our creosol floors?
Well, then, for next summer, it's going to be the construction area. We still have one other area to do.
But just remove that equipment was...
Yeah, well, they had to get in some riggers in here, and I was pretty amazed to see the equipment in the machine shop as to what it was 50 years ago to what it is today. It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I'd like to give a heads up to him and his team.
Yeah, no, absolutely, that's something worth noting. Great work, thank you.
And then under the old business, which kind of fits into the executive session aspect, just building security and so forth.
Okay, I think we'll be talking about that, we'll bring it up later as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything under new business? Okay, there's a committee person motion on the table, but that committee person is myself, and I'm going to have to hand over the gavel to the vice chairman. So, what I would like to do first is I would like to go ahead and take the report of the subcommittees out of order, and then go back to the committee person's motion. Would that be okay?
Sounds good.
Cool. Okay, so if we could have an approval of the school committee minutes for the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Getchea, second by Mr. Tatsias, roll call. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Yes. And then a approval of the July 28 Building Expansion Subcommittee meeting as well.
And why do you have to approve that? Because we're not on that committee, huh?
Sure. Yeah, that would be who was on that committee? Well, there are notes in here, are there not? Yeah, so there's notes in there, so the whole committee...
Okay, all right, I approve.
If you guys read them.
Yeah.
Sure. Motion by Mr. Getchea, second by Mr. Sheehan, roll call. Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Yes. And I'd like to segue into the Superintendent Evaluation that I have right next to me and all of you have in front of you. We started, we had a meeting on June 28th to discuss the evaluation, to set up guidelines, and to end up with our binder and proceed with evaluating the superintendent. We had all, school committee members received the binder, as well as the evaluations, and we had everything due by August 8th. We had seven returned, one of them was not returned due to health issues. So, the evaluations returned were something very common amongst them all. And what was common about them was the stellar performance that everyone feels that our superintendent is doing. For example, step one had five categories. There was did-not-meet, some progress, significant progress, met, and exceeded. The superintendent on step one got five exceeded and two met. Now, I tried to put a number on that, because I feel like, you know, we're in a school, and grades are what's important. So, I like to think of exceeded as a 95, because, you know, I was never an A-plus student. I was always a, if I was lucky, I was an A student. And I'm sure the superintendent was an A-plus student. Thank you for that comment, Mr. Gigi. So, with that being the case, I gave the exceeded a 95 rating, and I gave the met, which is meeting the standards, essentially a B, which is an 85. So, with that being the case, when we look at step one, assessing progress towards goal, the superintendent, as far as professional practice, scored a 92. As far as student learning goals, scored a 92. And as far as district improvement goals, scored a 94. Now, this is very common throughout this evaluation piece. When we look at assessing the performance on the standards. Now, we only had four categories in this particular section, but the superintendent scored exemplary on instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, professional culture, 21 out of 28 responses. Her overall score was a 92. On the next part, the superintendent's performance goals. Now, she gave us a binder that shared all of the work that she's done and all of the information that she's willing to share with us in the time. And I meant to bring the binder, and I don't know how I forgot it, because it was the biggest binder I've ever seen in my life, and I've seen a lot of binders.
I have one in my car, if you'd like me to get it.
There's no need, I know it weighs about 22 pounds.
I used it as a step.
Exactly.
I agree.
So, she proved all of the work that she's done, and she's done some wonderful work here. So, as far as her performance goals, again, out of the 28 options to mark, whether she's met performance goals or not, 23 of them were exceeded, and five of them were met. For some reason, I have written here 100. Now, I know she didn't get 100%, but I guess a 94 works again. So, this superintendent evaluation kept on going in the same way. And I hate to bore any of you people with all of this information, but bottom line is, I think we all feel that the superintendent is doing a wonderful job here. I sort of, you know, then something else, because everybody got to make comments, if you chose to make comments or not. So, I got to sort of pull out some of the comments. None of them are verbatim, a lot of them are me summarizing. And, you know, some of the words or some of the adjectives that were being used were effective communicator, outstanding manager, team builder, team worker, and team effort were mentioned five times. Work ethic were mentioned six times. Don't forget, only seven people responded. Professional was mentioned five times. School ambassador and leading by example was mentioned regularly. Focused on administrative team was something that I know I experience every day whenever I share any, talk, call up to talk to you about anything, and I felt like it was being noted on the evaluation as well. Also, something that was being touched on was something that you touched on again today, which was health and safety protocols. It wasn't just about the daily health and safety protocols, it was also how you were able to get the students back in the building of making sure we were all safe. And you were being pushed back by this school committee to go ahead and do it more rapidly, and we weren't, really, we were sort of itching to get the students back in here. We had a big COVID spike, you made the right decision, and while you were making the right decisions, you had a high attendance on the Zoom calls. Well, somewhere around January, you made a decision to, let's open the school back up after one of our breaks, and it was a seamless transition. Everyone was on board, not only the school committee, the students were itching to go, and you made sure that it was safe, not just for the students, but also for the staff, also through the ventilation system and with the plant director. You stayed focused, on task, and realistically, we did not have any outbreak in this building that was to be noted. So, I think ultimately, oh, there was one thing that was mentioned here, was sort of funny. NEASC was in here. of funny. Um, NIASK was in here, um, May three to May six. And, uh, NIASK gave us an approval of us doing a great job. We were audited for the first time in how many years, Ms. Superintendent? Five or ten?
Ten.
Ten years. It was a ten-year audit. And they came in with one recommendation. And the recommendation was addressing overcrowding. Well, the very last meeting that I had with you back in late June was about how we can add more classrooms so that we can address overcrowding. Bottom line is I feel, as this school committee feels, you have been doing a remarkable job here, and we are very grateful to have you, every single one of us. And I know it's not easy to take accolades, but thank you, thank you so much from behalf of myself and from on behalf of my committee members.
And there's no luck involved in that. Not at all. Dedication.
I just want to take a minute to say I appreciate the evaluation and I appreciate the accolades. And it is difficult for me to take accolades without bringing up the fact that I can only be the leader as I am without a team that I have. So I, I do have to, uh, just extend all my appreciation to the unity of the administrative team, the unity of the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the support, court staff, uh, over these last three years, coming together to do what's best for students in creating that school culture and climate where students want to be. So again, I'm only the leader that I am because of the team that I have working with me. So I extend my appreciation to them. And I, and my, and I also extend my appreciation to all of you because without your support, uh, without your support, I couldn't do the job that I do for the students and the school community. So I appreciate, uh, working here. I appreciate the students and I appreciate the people that I work with. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
And I think you bring out the best in everybody else.
I try.
You do.
She leads by example.
Yes, exactly.
She sure does.
Thank you.
So you all have, um, folders in front of you, um, to bring home, take a look at, soak in. I had the privilege of having them about a week prior to you guys. And, um, you know, enjoy what we sort of all experienced because the comment sections on many of these were overwhelming to read. And I think that, um, I don't know if you've had the chance to read them, Ms. Superintendent.
No, I don't have a copy of it, so.
Cool. Well, you're welcome because it now becomes public information. And, um, you know, enjoy that.
Thank you.
And then we'll come back next meeting and go on from there.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, what's next on the agenda is committee person's motions. And this has been a very quiet meeting, and I'm not sure exactly why, but I'm gonna hand this gavel over to the vice chairman.
You may stay.
And, uh...
Casey needs to hit you, eh?
No, no, because he's not the chairman, so he gets to read the motions. Moving along. Committee, uh, committee person's motion by Chairman Barlow to begin a statutory process to authorize stipends for members of the Greater Lowell Technical High School Committee in the amount of seventy-five hundred. Yes, so that's a, uh, that's a stipend that, um, I'm recommending of seventy-five hundred dollars per year to, uh, school committee members that sit here at Greater Lowell Tech. Um, I have been on this committee for eleven years. Uh, being on this committee for eleven years, I've, um, experienced a lot here. Um, some of the things, you know, I think the most notable thing is, uh, five superintendent searches. Um, superintendent searches take a lot of time. They take a lot of effort, and they are something that's very important to the growth of the school, to the growth of the staff, to the growth of the administrative team, and to move students along, um, um, so that they can be the best they can upon graduation. We have budget season annually. Uh, we've gone from somewhere about forty-two million dollars ten or eleven years ago to currently close to fifty-five million dollars. Um, that is, takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort. It takes a lot of reading. It takes a lot of discussion. Um, we not only discuss with the superintendent, we not only discuss with the meeting, sometimes we call each other and discuss that. Um, we are the largest vocational school in the state of Massachusetts. And, um, I feel that we are truly, not only are we, are people focused on what we do, but we are under the watchful eye of the state, and it's something that we all need to pay attention to in all that we do here. Um, I, I know we just finished, uh, union contract negotiations. There are seven unions in this school, and we need to meet with them. And we don't meet with them once. And we don't meet with them twice. We meet with them multiple times. And we listen, and we share, and we offer, and we listen, and we share, and they share, and they offer. There's a lot of work that goes in to the union negotiations. We've had a building project that was sixty-five million dollars that was done on time and under budget. Took about four years to do that. We have another building project just about to be started. We're hoping that it can be done in two years. Um, we as school committee members attend fundraiser, attend school fundraisers, attend school functions. Uh, we answer our constituents who call us regularly, our parents who call us regularly, um, staff administration. Um, we go through superintendent evaluations. We, we are committed to our students and committed to our staff. And I think one thing that I want to highlight, if I haven't highlighted enough, is we have five members right now currently seating, sitting at this table, whose seats are up this year to be voted on by our sending school districts. Two have returned their nomination papers. There have, no other nomination papers have been returned. We do a lot of work here. People probably realize we do a lot of work here. And when you try to ask people to run, generally you get the answer of, yeah, no, I don't see a value in that. We're helping students. You're helping the greatest, what I think, the greatest vocational school in the state of Massachusetts. You're moving things forward. No, yeah, I got my family. I got my kids, you know. In other school districts across the state, Lowell, Drakeett, Tinsborough, school committees get a stipend. Andover, Methuen, Lawrence, school committees get a stipend. I am presenting this because I feel that there's a lot of apathy out there towards people that want to sit on this board. And I feel it would be something to maybe give them some thought on running for Greater Lowell Tech and by getting the best people we can for working on this school committee. So that's the idea of my motion. I know it was a little long-winded, but it's something that's been sitting on my heart for a number of years. Anybody else have anything to add?
Yeah, I do. Um, I agree with, I'm not gonna double back on anything that Fred said. I agree with everything that he said. But I think if we look at, and it's just my opinion, um, the sending districts, you know, Dunstable, Tinsborough, Drakeett, Lowell, I think a number of five, five thousand dollars, I think would be, um, more sellable, only because I think coming out of the gate right at seventy-five hundred, which I, you know, I respect, but I think I'd like to see the number at five and, you know, I'd make a, a substitute motion just to bring it down to five.
You have an objection to that? I have no objection to that. You may have an objection to that?
No, I don't have an objection.
I, I do want to share one last thing prior to anything. I'm sorry. Um, this is only to get the ball rolling, okay? With this still has to be voted on by all of our sending, sending districts. Lowell has to vote on it. Drakeett, Tinsborough, and Dunstable all have to vote a bit. We need, we need to have, um, the selectmen or townspeople vote on it, um, by a three-quarter vote. So this is only to get the ball rolling. It doesn't mean we get paid the day after tomorrow. I, I have some thoughts. Go ahead, Curtis.
Go ahead, Curtis. Oh, you had your head out.
You, you were first.
Well, I'd probably go be a couple of minutes because, um, I guess where I'm coming from is I've been on this board since October fourteen. Um, but I want to bring up just a little history as far as stipends and that, and I'll go back to my previous position on the Lowell City Council that I served several terms on. Uh, I never had a vote for a raise on the council, but the council, uh, was four thousand dollars since the forties up to nineteen seventy, let's see, I forget, I forget what year. But the year I ran is the year that they went up from four thousand after forty years to seventy-five, to, uh, seventy-five hundred. And today, the city council gets twenty-five thousand, and the mayor gets thirty. I guess what I'm trying to say is, um, and I, and I think the medium is five thousand. Anything after five thousand, I believe you have to offer benefits. But it went from seventy-five hundred to twelve, twelve-five, and then it went up again and up again, and now it's twenty-five. Once it starts, it never stops. I don't care what anybody says. I've looked around the Commonwealth, other places. I knew taking this job would have paid. Nothing. Um, I got into academia because I didn't know a lot about it. Uh, I was a city council on the municipal side. Uh, I wasn't on the school committee. Uh, my, my former, my colleague here, George O'Hair, uh, was. Uh, I served with him. But, um, I, I tried to learn things, and it takes, it takes a while. This, this is, I have a warm spot in my heart for this place. And, uh, as Jill said, you know, you're only as good as the people under you. And, uh, she's assembled the team, and I think we've assembled the team over the years, meaning, uh, not to bring out names, but Kempton, he's an attorney. We have a, a vast, we have former alumni here that Paul's given his life to here. Uh, there's a lot of knowledge here, and I think we've done well. I really do. Uh, from receiving money from the state to what additions and this and that, but, um, I just feel that, uh, I, I feel I knew what it was when I was taking the job. Um, you know, everybody can use a couple extra dollars, but I'm not, uh, gonna be inclined to be voting on this stipend. So that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I just have a, a couple of thoughts. When I took the job, I was a firm believer that everybody should give something back to their profession and to their community. And you, you kind of stepped into it, and I was naive about what it was like to serve on this committee. And there is a huge time commitment that is required if you're gonna do the job well. Now, you can probably do it a little, little bit less time, but with the team that's been here and watching the superintendent and the, the administrative team, they work zealously on behalf of the, the school and the students here, you want to do as good by them as they do by you. And when you, and when you get down to it, there is a time commitment. I thought you eloquently put that together as the chairperson outlining the amount of time that was required for the superintendent search because you go out to the sites, you're interviewing different people, you're reviewing different backgrounds. And if you're doing that diligently, each one of those applications requires some thought and, and time and, and review. And then you look back in your extensive file cabinet, which I know Paul's got every document that he's had since the beginning of time, and it takes up three file cabinets. And, and that's time-consuming. And then when you go into the union negotiations, that's another experience that I enjoyed. And I think every member on the team, every union that was represented advocated zealously on their behalf. And sometimes that can, you know, be a little bit frustrating and you move forward. And again, it's time-consuming to do it in a, a way. And when you're advocating from the school committee's point of view saying, we don't have a lot of funds. We have to add, all the funds are earmac for, earmarked for certain activities or projects or salaries. And then you, you look at that and then I, I might feel a little guilty if somebody gave me some money to sit on the committee where it's a volunteer, um, position. Uh, but I do acknowledge, if you're gonna do it, it's hard. What I am, I did not submit renomination papers because I have a hard time going out and asking people to vote for me. I've always had a hard time doing that. If they want me, they can write my name on the, the ballot and then the powers that be can, to look at it. I tried with a due diligence to find somebody that I thought would fit with this team. Because I want somebody that actually fits with the team, um, for the future. I was said no on many occasions. You know, it's a thankless job, I hear. It's, you know, what, what reward do you get out of it? So I understand that maybe it would draw a different person to be involved, but I always am fearful that money detracts also the wrong type of people. Um, and so I'm kind of on the fence because there is a huge time commitment required if you're gonna do the job properly. Um, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm always one that you have to give back to in some way, form, or fashion. And I think every member on this committee came here with the mindset that it is a volunteer position and it's for the kids. And they all have a special heart for this school. I did not grow up in this area, but I have a heart because I want to give back the same opportunities that I was given in life. Um, and some people are a little bit less fortunate, and this is a great education. And as you can see, more, a lot of our students now move on and they're getting academic degrees along with a trade. And what an amazing combination that can be. Um, so I'm kind of on the fence because I couldn't find anybody to, to take my seat and, and fit with this team. So if money will motivate or incentivize somebody to come here, I don't know if five thousand's the right number. I don't know if it's twenty-five hundred. I don't know if it's seventy-five hundred. But I'm of the mindset that it's still a volunteer position. Um, and I guess that's my say. And I can respect your position, Fred, because you eloquently stated why. And I acknowledge each and every one of those things is time-consuming. And it takes an extreme commitment to do it. And you are one of the people that gives it that commitment. You read, you attend most all of the budget meetings, if not all of them. You attend all of the union negotiations. You were present. And I think a majority of the members here, and they want to be involved. Um, so I, I can respect the motion. And, uh, I think there's a volunteer for the kids, and I like to see the money go in a direction of the kids. If there's a way that, if there's a little bit left over in the budget that you can remunerate, because there is the thing that the public doesn't really see. There's a lot of fundraising, like we used to participate in the golf tournaments until COVID. Um, there's a lot of people asking for your donation because they're looking for some support down the road. And it comes with an expense, and that expense comes from our personal pockets, and that sometimes can be difficult. So there's pros and cons either way. And I respect the, the motion. I do.
So I'm sure you do. Oh, George, anything else?
Uh, you know, I mean, I can agree, uh, kind of agree with you. You know, when I decided to run after being an educator here for thirty years, and a couple of years later decided to jump into the becoming school board member. And I think, or I've said for many years that, uh, there should be a CD put out to inform you that you are not going to attend one meeting per month, that there's a lot more to it than meets the eye. And also because we're a district, a regional district, the city of Lowell never leaves me out of any donations, whether it's Winter Fest or, or, if it's your community, like Tinsborough now, this weekend, having a big block rally. I mean, uh, we get hit up for those, uh, student involvements. Uh, we just had a student recently that was involved with something, ran something down at the auditorium, uh, you know, asking for all of our involvement and that, that student doesn't understand what we already do. And we're very supportive. Any kid that's ever come up to me or wanna, you know, a fundraiser, we're, we're here. fundraiser, we're here. School plays, I happen to be one that goes through a lot of things also. I'm also retired, that means something, I have the time to do that. But I think at this point, I'm agreeing with the stipend. And I'm probably more in agreeing with the lesser of 5,000 to get started, you know, you know what I'm saying? But I know, you know, that I do, I donate to a lot, not just here in the school, but other priorities that I have that I want to donate to. But anyways, I'm in favor of it.
George?
Well, I, I'm listening to my, you know, co-members here, and everyone has said something about it, I agree with. It's, I've always been against a stipend, but I think that possibly times are changing, and getting people to run is an issue. And if you don't agree with it, you don't have to take it. So I can support your motion, but I don't think I would take it. So I, and things have changed, you know?
And just to kind of summarize, I think sometimes the public sees our scripted meeting here, and they see what we present, they don't see what happens in the background, and there is a substantial amount of work. And I do respect every member on this, on this committee, and it's a tough thing to, and it's just like.
It is.
Jill doesn't like any accolades, all right? She has a hard time with positive feedback, or even negative feedback, like anything. So it's one of those things that, if it was approved, is there anything in the system that if the budgets became tight and there wasn't a discretionary income, does that, is that the first thing that gets omitted? I don't know, because I don't, the question's never come up before, because again.
Mine, I don't mind the budget.
Yeah, because I like to just kind of, you know, always put the kids first.
Excuse me if I could. At our town meeting, in our town, it comes up every year for renewal, the stipends in the town. So if you're on the Board of Selectmen, or you're on a committee, that you get a stipend, it has to be voted in again every year.
Yeah, here's another issue, and I'm just thinking off the cuff, because is, I believe the selectmen in the town of Dunstable get a small stipend of like $3,000, and it's kind of hard to say that there's a stipend on another committee somewhere that may exceed, and they work zealously and diligently and tirelessly for the community's good and benefit. So that's maybe another challenge, because I'm from a much smaller community than my fellow committee member here.
So we have a substitute motion from Committeeman Sheehan. So we're going to put in a, I guess the motion's going to be, collated motion, Committeeman's...
amend the motion.
amend the motion, Committeeman Sheehan, begin the statutory process to authorize stipend, moves a Greater Lowell Technical School Committee of the amount of 5,000. Just substitute the 5,000 with 7,500, and Matt's naming for.
So Matt's going to be...
Do we have a second for Matt's motion?
I'll second it.
Second one, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
No.
Mr. Tatzis?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear? No. Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Lemay?
No. Do you have a...
Okay.
Next on the agenda would be executive session. So if we could have maybe a 10-minute recess before we go into... We're going to take a vote coming out. Executive session, it looks like we will more than likely take a vote, therefore, if I could entertain a motion to enter.
Or maybe.
Yes, motion by Mr. Sheehan, seconded by Mr. Moran, roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzis?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Maybe in the kitchen.
And we have some recommendations by the superintendent, so I'm going to turn the meeting over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be asking the committee for a motion to add a side letter of agreement, which includes adding a competitive gaming club and one advisor, and removing Project Purple and one advisor, adding an educator-rising club and two advisors, adding a sports team to athletics, a dance team with one head coach and one assisting coach. Then I'll be asking for...
So moved. I'll second it. Okay, motion for, as the superintendent just shared, roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzis?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Okay, I'll also be asking for a motion for a side letter of agreement to update the contract to reflect the budget approval of the addition of an assistant cheerleading coach position, and updating the head coach's salary. Total approved, $8,586.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzis?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
And finally, I'll be asking for a motion to, for approval for a non-contractual stipend position entitled adventure course manager.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzis?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. And I think that I'd just like to share that the amount for all the positions that we just added came to approximately $18,400. Okay, I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Adjourned by Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Sheehan, roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchir?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzis? Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.